I call this meeting order today for May the twenty first, two thousand twenty five special meeting. Welcome everybody here that's managed to come out in the rain today. Everybody that's on virtual, welcome y'all here today. Our first order of business would be county administrator items. Do you want to do it or you whatever?
Either way, we do have Dr. Leslie here this afternoon to present some information related to the school board budget. If you all wish to hear that first, we can do that if you'd like.
Okay, if y'all, Dr. Leslie, would you mind come up please?
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Glad to have you here.
Thanks. Okay, I don't have control of the PowerPoint, so I will have to ask to have it moved along. Before I get started, I did have just one quick piece of business I wanted to make the Board of Supervisors aware of, if that's okay. I just wanted to let you know that we had received a tax bill in our office on Monday for a very, very hefty sum. We did not feel that that was correct. So we did do some investigation and U H Y, of course, is here assisting us at this point. And they did assist us in tracking it down. And it looks like there was an error when we filed our W twos in two thousand twenty three. There was an error in the information they inputted in one of the lines. So the tax office then said, you owe us this amount. It was an error. So we have spoken with the tax office and we will refile those forms. And hopefully, there will not be anything that we owe. But I just wanted to be straightforward that that had happened. We looked into it. We're taking care of it. And the finance ladies have done a great job working with U H Y. And they've pulled those forms to refile those for us today. So right now, we don't know anything, but we would know more after we filed. But hopefully, there won't be an issue there. We can see exactly how the error was made.
Okay.
All right, moving on. So I'm going to be presenting to you the data that we put together for the fiscal year twenty twenty six division budget. Next slide, please. If at any point I'm going too quickly or you have a question, please let me know. There is a lot of information in this presentation. I try to give more than I'm going to say so that it is available to you. So the information that I'll be talking about is going to be contained in the Fund One. So Fund Two, Fund Three, Fund Four, and Fund Five will not be included in this. However, you have information on nutritional services in the spreadsheet that I sent to you. I will briefly touch on Fund Three, which is federal allocations, and I will only do that to discuss how there was an over budgeting previously and how we are will be absorbing some of that into the local budget moving forward. Next slide, please. So these are the projected increases for that category one fund. You can see we have all of these categories within there. Instruction, admin attendance, and health, pupil transportation, operations, and maintenance. I'll allow you to read the rest. The delta percent change on the right hand side is just the percent change within each of those categories from last year to this year. So for example, in instruction, what I'm proposing today is four point nine percent higher than the number from last year, so on and so forth. Obviously, you can see there's a big jump in admin attendance and health, and that has to do with a mandatory contract payout. It's not actually adding another position into that category. And I'll show that to you when we get to that line. Next slide, please. Okay, so in instruction, there's a number of things. You were given a copy of all of the account lines and what is in there. This is just a general overview. So what kinds of things are we looking at when we calculate instruction? That would be salaries primarily for teaching staff. There are supplemental salaries that are in there as well. Other payroll costs such as their FICA, things of that nature. And then you can see the individuals that are put into this category. So we actually calculate every teacher's salary, what that would look like, et cetera, et cetera. There are also instructional materials in these lines, and you would see those broken out in the chart of accounts, and then offsite instructional programs. So what we included in the proposed budget was an overall approximately five percent increase for teaching for all staff other than administrators. And that would include a three point seven five percent increase on the scale overall. And it also includes a step of one point two five percent. So in education, if you're a teacher at eleven years, when you finish that eleven year, you move up to step twelve, and that's a one point two five percent raise in this county, how that's calculated. Other things, of course, as salary increases are calculated, that will increase the FICA and the other deductions. Healthcare did increase overall about six percent. It does vary by plan. I did input every individual specific plan in there so that I knew exactly what that increase would look like. V R S overall did have a slight decrease in their percentage. It was fourteen point, I think, seven one, and now it's gone to fourteen point four one. And then the V R S hybrid plan will appear to increase in your accounts. It is not actually an overall increase, rather in previous budgets, it simply just was not calculated correctly. Raises for any administration in this category are one point two five. So that's a step only. That would not include a three point seven five overall increase to their pay to their salary scale. And then, of course, the same fringe benefits. This instruction also does include two new positions, one a middle school reading specialist, and the second, a Director of Human Resources and Student Services. So you may be asking, when you start to look at the numbers, if I have a four point nine percent increase, how could I have calculated a five percent? Well, first of all, it's only in those instructional salary positions or in salary positions that are non-admin. But again, we had that drop in V S, excuse me, V S R S, which is the retirement system. And then there were some overestimations in previous budgets that I picked up, and I adjusted those accordingly. Next slide, please. So there are four major subcategories under instruction. This is the largest one. So I promise you, all of the sections will not take this long. But this one is so comprehensive that I wanted to make sure that I was able to break it down into the four primary components so that you could see what we were actually looking at. Next slide, please. So here in elementary instruction, you can see the F Y twenty five numbers, the F Y twenty six numbers, that changed the actual dollar amount that is different, and then the percent change, again, over on the right hand side. So there were some things, as I started going through the budget, that required some correcting. For example, it looks like classroom instruction went down even with a raise. Technically, it did not. You see it picked up in the special education below, which is much higher. That is because the positions were not parsed out correctly in the account lines. And so I clarified that information. So the overall increase would be the same, but you're going to see it bounce a little bit differently in each of the lines. Does that make sense? Okay. You can move on to the next slide. So similarly, here, we have the same thing in middle school. Again, that special education coming up a little more. I was, we made the correct adjustments to that budget. High school, please. And again, here is your line by line. Again, these are overall. So when it says classroom instruction, that's looking at the teaching staff or the high school, and then adding all of those numbers together, all of the salaries together to come up with those numbers. That is broken out, as I said earlier, in the chart of accounts that we sent over as well. Next slide, please. Okay. And then this is the last section out of the four under instruction for division. And again, you can see, for example, in that alternative education, we have sort of that change dip, and that's where we picked up one of those overestimations. Any questions? Okay, the improvement of instruction that you see at the bottom with a large increase, N P I have indicated there just means new position. Frankly, I did that term I myself because there's a lot of stuff going on in here. But I wanted to be able to explain when we saw an anomaly like that, what it was that we were looking for, looking at, excuse me.
What is that new position?
That is for the Director of Human Resources and Student Support. Did I say that right? Yes. Okay. Okay, next slide, please. So here's just the overall totals from each of those breakdowns that I just gave you. Again, I gave you the major subtotals for each of those categories, and here's how they tally out with an overall percent increase of four point nine or seven hundred and sixty five thousand, one hundred and twenty eight dollars. Questions so far? Okay, move. Next slide, please. All right, Administration, Attendance, and Health. Again, here you have a nineteen point one percent increase, which is quite large and requires some clarification. So you have what's included on the side, but this is your executive level of administration. You can see the other positions there, and then some student health and administration. So raises overall in this category would be fairly small, except for nurses at a one point two five percent. The same factors that played into the changes in the instructional category play in here. However, there is a contract payout included for a previously employed person with our division with a mandatory payout, and that had to be included. Prior to that, I don't remember the exact number, but the increase was somewhere closer to six or seven percent. It was not nineteen. Next slide, please. So you'll pick it up here. Again, I put it in yellow to be very straightforward on what it is that we're looking at. And then you can see the changes in the actual dollar amount, as well as the percent change. In some cases, fiscal services, for example, that number went down, which had to do just with a change of staff. Questions so far? Okay, that's all for this category. So the next category, next slide, please, would be pupil transportation. In this particular case, we did see a decrease. However, we are going to need to look at replacing buses over the next few years. Conversation for another day. You see the increase, however, because I did methodically go through all of the information that was in the division and found that there were some positions that were previously included in this category that we no longer have. And so by removing those positions, even by including the raise, I was able to show a slight decrease in the overall tally of this category. Next slide, please. You can see that this does not have many categories within it. There's vehicle operations, so your drivers, et cetera, and then the maintenance. And then, of course, in your chart of accounts, vehicle operation is broken out into salaries and FICA and health benefits and all of those other things. Questions so far? Okay, next slide, please. All right, operations and maintenance, very much the same thing. I just wanted to make sure that I had written everything out. So you have some directors, custodians, technicians. The same raise was applied here for the general workers. However, administration on a much smaller step scale. Next slide, please. And here is the breakout here for building management, building services, et cetera, et cetera, down the line with an overall increase of three point seven percent. And again, these are tally lines. So like a one million eight twenty two oh seven seven is broken down by account line in the chart of accounts that was provided. Next slide, please. Facilities has a zero percent increase at this time. We repeated the numbers from the previous year. Next slide, please. Other increases, the I S A E P with a small increase of six percent across the board. Next slide, please. Technology, same information telling you on the left hand side who and what we're including in these numbers and where we got them, and then why we are showing something that's up. And again, that would be captured in the increases in salaries. So essentially, I did not increase increase any categories except for one, which was a request for transportation. Other than that, the only increases you're going to see in the budget are going to be increases for salaries for our workers. Okay, next slide, please. So here is a breakout of technology. Please understand, again, these are subtotals. So included within these subtotals are many different lines of accounts. Overall increase here would be one point three nine. Next slide, please. Okay, federal allocation estimates, as I had said earlier, I included this because in some of the previous budgets, the budgeted amount for federal dollars for positions that we pay out with for fed with federal dollars, excuse me, I've gotten ahead of myself, were higher than what we had anticipated actually coming in. And so I wanted to make sure that we captured that missing amount because that would be an amount that we would have to pay out locally. So I want to be clear, it's not that the overall federal funding decreased it or anything or decreased it, excuse me, decreased or anything like that. But I wanted to make sure that when I budgeted for federal accounts for paying people, I'm only budgeting the exact amount that I'm anticipating getting back. Next slide, please. So you can see I have broken them out for you here. Some of these numbers are last year's numbers. If the new numbers are not out yet, but overall, there was quite a bit that was budgeted in for the federal dollars, and we would not anticipate to get all of those federal dollars for which was budgeted. So when I budgeted for this year, I used the exact amounts that we expect to have come in. Next slide, please.
Why wouldn't that have been done previously? Why wouldn't they?
I'm not sure if it was just continued to be built, or I'm not really sure. Sorry. So just moving on to the final snapshot, this is really just, again, a once over from what everything we've just went through, category by category, giving you the overall change and the percent change. So the total funds for this year would be twenty two six fifty five nine ninety, which is actually one million one hundred and twenty six thousand nine hundred and twenty six over the previous budget, or a five point two three percent. Next slide, please. All right, I'm almost done. So at the top of this slide, you'll see the summation of the Fund One proposals. But when we make a proposal for local funds, we always go ahead and take off other funds that we anticipate non-federal that are coming in. And you can see those broken out here. There are some rebates, there are sales tax, and also total state funds that are here in the amount of six million four hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirty five dollars. I do want to be clear that these are projected numbers that were given from the General Assembly. There will be final numbers posted, but we do not have those numbers because they are not out yet, unless they came out this morning, in which case I did not see them. But as of yesterday, they were not posted. So these numbers will have a little bit of bounce in them. I just wanted to be straightforward about that last slide, and then I will stop talking. So you can see the total, the E is the summation on the side, Fund One proposal, and then the reduction of all revenue. That was non-federal because federal is budgeted differently into a different one, Fund Three, as I stated at the beginning. So the total funds requested last year were fifteen million three oh five oh five oh. That was not what was given, and I'll talk about that in a second. But based on those numbers, I missed a comma, we were requesting sixteen million two and thirty seven thousand, three hundred and fifty five after deducting the state, which is an overall one point one six nine six one five million dollar increase or six percent. The actual funds received, however, last year, which were not necessarily included in the budget, was fourteen million eight eighty five. So with the budget that we have for this year, it would actually look more like one point three five two one one one, or a nine percent increase over what was actually received. That is my last slide.
So you say that that one, a one point three five two point one one was the increase in the overall budget last year?
That would be the overall difference in what was received by the school division last year and what we would be requesting for this year. So originally, they requested fifteen three oh five oh five oh in that neighborhood, but that was not what was granted.
And you know, do you know how much you've overspent in this current budget?
So in this current budget, we have U H Y working on it right now. I did see a reimbursement go out for a little over four hundred thousand dollars. So that should be coming back in. That should help us to offset. So I do not have a final number for you. U H Y has come in and helped us a lot. They have done similar work to what I presented here. What I presented to you was based on mean spending. They have gone in and pulled every single invoice. So they are continuing that work. So hopefully, in the next few days, we will have a better number for you as they continue to go through all of those open invoices and purchase orders to make sure. So I cannot put a number on it at this time. And I don't, like I had said when I spoke to you last time, I had given you a number. It was roughly a million. That was looking at a hundred thousand coming in in revenue. I've seen a reimbursement go out for four twenty seven, so that would mitigate that number down as well. But I can't give you a, I can't give you a final number right now.
So that was a federal reimbursement?
Yes.
All right. How long does it usually take to get a reimbursement back?
I don't know the answer to that question. I would say within a month would be reasonable, but I don't know the exact number. I know they come through as the E D I transfers. But other than that, I don't know. I've not been able to walk through a reimbursement from submission to approval to have it. So I don't have a good frame of reference.
That's fine. All right, gentlemen, y'all having have questions?
I don't have any question, but I always like to start my conversation off with you is, I know you knew this, and you've come into this, and you've done a remarkable job with this presentation together, getting things straight. But the county budget was presented about a week ago. And in the county budget, it was brought to our attention, too, that the contingency fund is going to be down to five hundred thousand dollars due to overspending. County staff is not going to get any pay increases. And we've always said, when one one group of employees don't get pay increases, none's going to get it. We've got departments that have cut a lot of their budget to try to balance things out for this upcoming year. And I will be honest, I don't think this is doable. We're looking at an eight cents tax increase. You add this on top of it, you might as well run that on up to sixteen cents. I just don't think it's for this year. It's realistic. That's my opinion in one of five. I don't know how this, how this is going to even happen this year. And I know you've put a lot of time in it. Don't want to discourage you. I appreciate everything that you've done. But with, you know, we can't give to one group and and cut drastically from others. Sheriff's Office, you know, they had some, they wanted to add in a deputy or two, and, you know, that's not going to happen. So I don't, I don't know. I think this needs to go back and be reworked.
Question is, will it be worked? Will it be reworked?
I don't know.
I called to Dr. Leslie.
No, no.
But it comes from their board.
And I'm
Comes from her board.
Right. And, you know, one of our biggest concerns is the impact on citizens when they go and pay the tax bills. And, you know, then we got the teachers and the kids. So it's got to be a balance in there somewhere. I'd like to say that I don't, to me, this is not doable.
All right, gentlemen, any comments?
Well, I think we need to do all we can to, um, make sure that we have enough to take care of the kids.
I can't hear you, Mr. Flunk.
Look, I think we should do everything we can to take care of the kids and the teachers, and make sure we keep our good teachers. And one thing I want to add, what happened to summer school?
So summer school was cut last year for this year's budget. So when the budget was reworked for the twenty five school year, summer school was removed from the budget, from the original proposal to the final proposal.
Let's see, that's hurting a lot of kids.
I understand. And in keeping with the previous year's budget, I did not place it back into next year's budget. So it is not included in this proposal. I built, as I stated, the only things that I have included was one suggestion for travel and the salary increases. Those are the only things that I have added. I haven't added any, anything else. So if it wasn't in last year's budget, it hasn't been included this year.
So, Mr. I'm sorry.
Kids, uh, kids that need that summer school for graduation.
I'm unable to hear you.
I said, the kids that need their summer school because some of them need to complete a course or whatever, for graduation.
Sure. So we do have a, we do have a program that we are, and I understand what you're saying on the importance of summer school in general. Just to clarify for our older students who need courses that they need to repeat, we do use an online system that we are able to offer students to be able to do that credit recovery so that they can get those courses if they're needed in order to graduate. So that is something, but there is not a summer school insofar as kids are coming in and having a program. That was not included in the budget. Well, just so happened, the license we had for the online system extended well into the summer so that we could continue to take advantage of it for students for credit recovery.
What if those kids don't have computers at home?
So we do provide them. Sure. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So is this budget presented, Mr. Tadlock? What, what does that do? What does that add to the county budget? Because we were looking at the eight cent tax increase, contingency fund going down to
So
five hundred thousand.
So with the, with the school division, we are still looking, and I kept the eight cent real estate tax increase in there. One other revenue aspect that I did get a chance to talk to the Commissioner of Revenue about is that our assessment ratio on our vehicles, over the last couple of years, we have lowered that to thirty five percent because of the cost of the values on on vehicles. And that was due to COVID. A lot of those vehicle valuations, I think, are coming down now. So one thing that we are looking at is increasing that back from thirty five to forty percent. And by doing that, that generates about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars back in revenue as well. So with that, and including the school division's request, we are still dipping into the undesignated fund balance about one point three million dollars. Now, that's considering, it would have about one point six million dollars remaining, but that does not include any supplemental appropriations request from the school division for this fiscal year. So that's based still based off that three million dollars estimated. And again, please remember, these are all estimated numbers.
And I understand they're all estimated numbers, but another concern we need to be looking at is, is building that contingency fund back up.
And, and please keep in mind that the numbers that I just provided to you does not include the proposed reductions that we're looking at. So just full, full information.
You know, I don't think the now that that contingency fund the last few years has been the saving grace for the budgets. And I think we need to get away from that process. I don't think that's the way to do, to do a budget.
Yeah, that fund has been dipped in entirely too much. That process has to be stopped. It has to be stopped this year. No more dipping into it. Agencies in the county are going to have to start living within their budget and not overspend. Whatever money you're given, you'll have to live within your means, make whatever cuts you have to make. But the taxpayer cannot stand this eight cent tax increases a lot. It could be twelve, twelve to fifteen cent. And I don't even want to support eight cent.
I just want to make sure we've had all departments, all counts that.
Yep. I think we need to, I agree with Jimmy, what he said originally. He said one out of five, just make it two out of four, two out of five. But at the same time, I think the school perhaps may need some guidance on how much to cut. I mean, if they just go back and cut something and come back, where do we stand? We need to give them some guidance on where they need to be in line with. We've cut other agencies, other departments so much, it's only failed that they do the same. And with some guidelines that when they do come back, we have something to work with. I don't, I don't know what those numbers are. We'll have to work with that, but, or where are they going to do the cuts? But it needs to be in line with other agencies.
Yep. I'll certainly agree with you, Mr. Flushing. Any other comments?
Yeah, can we talk about the well for a minute? That's included in, in the budget you presented to us, right? Three hundred and ninety thousand dollar replacement of the well.
That, that is, um.
I've talked with Jeff Brand because we had conflicting ideas at the previous meeting about what needed to be done to satisfy the county, the D E Q. And Dr. Leslie, you probably can speak better to this than I, but Mr. Brand's comments to me were that we are only required by the D E Q to abandon one of those wells at this point. Not replace either, but to abandon one of those two wells, both of which are connected, and either of which could supply both of which are connected, and either of which could supply water to both school buildings, the middle high and elementary, or elementary to middle high. Whatever the correct path is, I mean, that, that's a big savings that could go into this budget right there, and you have anything to add to that?
Um, so I did, I received an email from, uh, the engineer today. Um, so I'm, I'm not certain, they think that the wells are connected, but they're not certain.
They, they, they were not, they were not originally. I don't know if they are now, they were not originally.
Right, uh, this information, and these are ballparks, this is not a full write-up, I just wanna be clear. Um, says about eight thousand for the study, um, and then something about twenty thousand per well if they had to dig wells. Uh, that's, that's the information that I have, and, uh, like I said, that just came in this morning. I haven't really had a chance to go through it, came in from the engineer, and there was some conversation between him and the Director of Operations, but I thought that you might ask about it, so I just wanted to bring it up. Um, so, I don't think we still have a, a firm understanding, but I had said that at the last meeting that the understanding is that the wells are connected, have to figure out the connection. Uh, and then one of the wells needs to be abandoned, and the other one can be used to, to supply water. So, um, in best case scenario, we shouldn't need to dig a new well. Worst case scenario, I would say they would have to dig one. Uh, but he did say, uh, the engineer did also suggest that we go ahead and budget for two, uh, at worst case scenario, but of course, that would be, you know, pending. I think, Mr. Tadlock, I think you got the same email, if you had a chance to look at it.
I did, very briefly, it, it came in, um, around eleven, eleven, twelve o'clock, so I didn't get a chance to really look at it, but I just forwarded the email to the board members for your information.
And, and there is no question that, that if that one well was put into use, it can supply enough water to take care of both schools.
I personally can't answer that, but I have been told that it has adequate water to supply well. Uh, and I believe the engineer may have actually said that, uh, I'm not certain that he did, I'm sorry, I don't wanna waste your time in reading through this, but, but that is my understanding, yes.
One more thing about the wells, uh, Mr. Brand didn't have any idea where the three hundred ninety thousand dollar figure came from.
I can't answer that question.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Um, like I said, those were the numbers, and Mr. Tadlock has the same email, those were the numbers that were suggested this morning, uh, by the engineer, uh, they had said something about, previously, it was like twelve thousand dollars, and he thought twenty thousand per well was a more up-to-date figure, since those figures were somewhat old. But I don't, I don't know.
Well, you know, we've already set one hundred, ten thousand aside last year or a year before for the well, so well's coming in at twenty thousand, well. Money not to cover two wells and that. So, like your question was, but the three ninety, where'd that come from? I have no idea. That's, that's way overinflated.
Fairly accurate figure, you would think that would be on paper somewhere.
Yep.
Dr. Leslie, could you somehow check into that in the future and find out that the wells were actually connected and when that took place?
Yeah, I believe that the engineer is gonna have to do that because even our gentlemen who are taking a look at it are not able to tell that ground level. I don't know what they use, they use a probe, uh, but as soon as we get that information, yeah, I will absolutely.
Cause my understanding was they're not connected.
Uh-huh, oh, absolutely, because, you know, that's a, that is a big deciding factor in my understanding with, you know, disconnecting them and abating the one well, or abandoning the one well we had talked about, just putting a seal into it seems far more straightforward, if that is a possibility.
All right, anything else, Mr. Williams?
I do have another question. Um, so the last time you were with us, there was some discussion about the superintendent's position, the assistant superintendent's position and the financial director, what's the status of those three positions now? Have we had hires, all three, are we advertising for those positions?
So, the finance director is up right now, and you asked about superintendent, uh, is up right now, is internal. Uh, and what was the other one you asked?
Superintendent. So, it all finalized.
Um, I mean, the superintendent position is not posted.
Are we actively looking for a financial director?
I'm sorry?
Are we actively looking for a financial director?
Yes.
That's all good.
If, if the county's gonna do the, uh, finance July, why are they actively looking for a finance director?
So, that is a great question, uh, so we actually had the position up, and then we took it down, and then we put it back up. Some of the fear, uh, is we have UHY here now, and there is fear that, and, and this comes from me as well, uh, that when they leave in a couple of weeks, we don't have somebody to pick that up, and I would hate to see us, as a county, you know, spend money to get something fixed, to have it become unfixed. Um, and I, I think the parameters of, um, and I know this is a decision for both boards, but I, I don't have any information on what it looks like, and so, you know, we have a lot of pieces of finance in-house right now, so there is, I am personally concerned with just the transition, and like I said, spending this money to get it back in order. Uh, and not wanting something to happen, because as you have seen, you know, I'm putting together projections, we're paying very close attention to what's happening, but, uh, there's, you know, there's, that's not something that I can continue to do and then try to do, you know, all of the other things. Uh, not that I won't this year, but you understand, like, that is a position in and of itself.
All right. I get your answer. All right. Progress with UHY, they are proceeding, progress with UHY, are, are they proceeding as expected, or?
They are, they have been really, really wonderful, uh, they came in and worked with our accounts payables, um, right off the bat, uh, got them up and rolling and getting things out the door, um, and then we had, uh, on, that was last week, Friday, and then Monday, um, we had other specialists come in, and they worked with our payroll folks, um, and they have actually been working remotely the last two days, but they are able to get into our system and have put together, uh, you know, as I stated, exhaustive lists of, um, purchase orders and invoices and things, um, to the level of detail of being able to get after those really tight numbers that we talked about. Um, they felt that they wanted to get a handle on those two things before they broached the reimbursement piece that we had discussed. We said some of the reimbursements have been submitted, I've seen them, uh, and they, they come to me for final approval, and I have put them through for approval. Uh, but I, I imagine we have more work to do with figuring out exactly what's there and what needs to be monitored as far as that's concerned, um, and then the last piece is, um, and this was included in, um, the letter of engagement that was forwarded. They are willing, um, to sit down after we feel that those things are in a good place and to review the budget, um, and to go through, um, you know, a line by line of what is being paid out of categories and things of that nature, so that, you know, that can be clarified a little bit.
Good. Yep.
So, I have, I've been, um, it's, it's been really great working with them, and like I said, it's, it's sort of a weight lifted, and so, uh, that's the concern is, you know, when they leave, are we able to, to keep, keep that in the air? Uh, and they've been, they've been really straightforward about also telling us, you know, that they would assist in making sure they're writing out what's being done so that we have that sort of vertical alignment.
So, where are we at in the county process? Because right now, we, we duplicating the effort.
Yeah, as, as far as, uh, if taking over the, the finances, i- is that what you're asking about? So, there was a, the draft, uh, MOA, MOU, uh, that the county attorney had provided. So, I think it's a matter of sitting down and ironing that out, uh, between the two boards, um, and direction from the board, how you all wish to proceed on that, uh, that, that's kinda how, I guess, the last, where we last left it, so.
Has that been done? I mean, the MOU, the draft?
The, the draft has been done and provided to the board, yes, sir.
Sound like we need to get here. Yep.
What would need to happen before we set up that meeting?
Yeah, we don't have time.
What would need to happen before we set up that meeting?
We need to review the MOU.
And get some questions answered, legal questions.
Cause I'm, I'm like Dr. Leslie, I don't wanna have his money invested in UHY coming in and helping getting things straightened. And when they leave, it's nothing in place. I think we defeated the purpose of having UHY come in. And it's putting the strain back on, on them again.
Has every, has everybody read through that MOU?
Been through it once, do it again.
Been through it once. I can always read it again. But if we haven't read through it, I would suggest we do that very soon. Cause we need to have another meeting on this immediately.
Yeah.
Even if we could have time today to go through it. And I, I agree too, I don't wanna duplicate things, but I don't wanna lose what UHY has done. And, uh, if you can come ahead, I don't wanna go back. So, and we do not have time for any, any wasted time here. Cause, uh, July one is, uh, right around the corner. Had to be here before we know it. And I know Dr. Leslie's doing everything she can do as quickly as possible, but she can only do so much. And I do say one thing, as far as the presentation today, have a very good presentation, a lot of information into it, we've never received anything like that before. So, thank you for all your hard work and effort you put into it.
You've got a lot of good people in that school system.
Yeah.
And I hope, when you get your assistant, things will smooth out even more. But you got a lot of talented people in that school system, and I know one in particular that could handle that job and do a very good job. And I hope things work out. You know, get these finances straight, have a smooth year. We've, we've got the next progress.
Yep. You're right, Mr. Brand. All right, gentlemen, you have anything else? Staff, have any comments, questions, anything?
What, what are, what is our direction to the school board right now as far as the budget is concerned?
Go back and look at it. Cause this is unacceptable.
What is acceptable? I think they need some guidelines.
They're gonna make some massive cuts there.
I mean, even if you come up with a number.
We need a million dollars.
Well, that's fine, tell them that.
Need over a million dollars.
Tell them that. Don't, don't let them come back here with five hundred thousand and say, this is our cut, this is what we found. We're still in the same boat, give them some guidance, something they can work towards and come back where we know we can work with what they come back with.
Well, I guess you're looking at somewhere between one point five, one point nine.
As long as they understand that.
Well, I say, if you, uh, do all you can, you can't meet that goal, you're just praying what you have back. I mean, you don't want to really, I, I'm disgusted that, uh, we don't have summer school. You know, something you just can't cut, I mean, if you're gonna run a good system, you know? You just can't cut because people say cut, you know what's best for the school and the kids and the parents, so that's very important, you know?
All right, gentlemen, have any other comments? If not, I'm gonna thank Dr. Leslie for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your time you put into this and, uh, hope you have a wonderful rest of your day.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, man. Tadlock?
All right. Wait a few seconds for
Yep.
the, uh, overview to get up on the screen there. All right, so as, as previously stated, this, uh, you do have a second draft, uh, which does, uh, it still includes the eight cent, uh, real estate tax rate increase proposed. Um, and it does include the school division's, uh, budget now as well, uh, their request. Um, again, this does include the three hundred, approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional revenue that we would anticipate, uh, receiving from the, uh, vehicles, changing that percentage from thirty-five to forty percent. So, the, the total budget, um, and this is with all of the proposed requests from all of the departments, uh, is forty-nine million, one hundred thirty thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars. Um, the remaining undesignated fund balance, uh, with this would drop to one million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, thirty-nine dollars. And again, that does not factor into any supplemental appropriations, um, requests from the, the school division. I can go over the potential reductions, uh, with the board, again, that's not included in this packet, uh, in this draft. Um, one thing that we do need to decide on, uh, sooner than, than later is a time to hold the public hearing for both the school division budget and the, the county budget. Um, if possible, what I'd like to do is, uh, we have to advertise that one week. Um, if possible, I'd like to have that June fifth, uh, as the public hearing for both the school division and the county budget. We could do those as two separate public hearings if the board wishes to do that. Um, I just need guidance on how you all wish to, to advertise that. Uh, we can advertise it as is right now, or if you wish to advertise it differently, just let me know. Uh, but we can go through the potential reductions now if you'd like, uh, that's up to the board.
Why can't we, uh, advertise the worst case scenario? And at least have the public hearing?
Yeah, for both of them, we can't, we don't, we can always do the worst. That, that gives Mr. Tadlock a number to advertise, so we can get that in. That's all he needs, is that number from us, and then we can always make reductions. And we need to do it in two separate public hearings, like we normally have been doing it, but don't combine. That way, it makes it easier for us, easier for the public.
We can hold them the same night, we'll just have two separate public hearings.
Can you make a motion on this?
Yeah, take a motion right now.
Take a motion, we move forward, advertising the county budget, school budget, two separate public hearings.
All right.
I got a motion second. Any other discussion? If not, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. Tadlock, I'll get you started.
No, we'll, we'll get that advertised. No, we'll, we'll get that advertised uh, for. June fifth and um. The.
We didn't set a time in that motion.
That that's up to the board, whatever time you'll.
That time you want to amend your motion or set the time into it.
I'm in the motion, wanna have. Clock?
Six, good.
Six. All right. All right. Long yard, that's all right. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Right. Six P M. On June the fifth.
Sorry.
That's a Friday now, gentlemen. I want y'all to know that.
All right.
Thursday.
Thursday, that's Thursday.
My wrong month, thank you.
It's twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
Yeah. He was twenty.
June the fifth, I I look at June the sixth some reason. Thank y'all for correcting me.
Good my father now.
All right. Tadlock?
All right.
You need from us?
That, that's all I need. We, we do have the uh, proposed reductions, but. That, that list is gonna be um, a still a work in progress as we're still working with other. Departments and um, still reviewing other portions of the budget, so.
Okay, uh, do we need to uh, you still getting uh, information from the departments? Have we met on that before? Once you get that information? Do we need to meet on that? I think we've met like that in in the past, I have.
Some of the departments have come to the board. Um, if the board wishes to have. Uh, the departments come back or if there's a department you wish to present to the board, we can certainly do that.
Yes, I would like to see uh. The departments come back, you know? Maybe they have guts that uh. They can help us well. And so they can't.
Well, we have been meeting with the departments and that's the um, potential reduction list that was sent out to the board. So you, you have a copy of that, that list. So.
I bet if we have any questions for a particular. Department, we could ask them to come in.
Right, sure, yes.
Sure, absolutely. We can do that.
I have the best way to do it.
Yeah, in that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if there's any clarification needed on the list that I had sent out, just let me know.
All right. I got thirty-four.
All right. What else, gentlemen?
So we don't have anything until June fifth?
Nothing till June the fifth.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna review the uh, the MOU and get back with Mr. Tadlock so we can set up a meeting.
Yep. We need to do that right away.
Yes. Okay.
We can kind of set a date on that right now?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
So what are y'all looking at? Next week? One ninth thirtieth?
And the thirtieth is a Friday.
Yeah, there's a Friday.
Third is.
Monday's a holiday.
I got the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth.
That sounds good. Either one of them.
Twenty-eighth, good.
Twenty-eighth.
You're good?
Okay, twenty-eighth.
I can't do it. I gotta take the wipe somewhere.
Okay.
I can't change that one.
Can't do the twenty-ninth.
I could do the twenty-seventh.
And do the twenty-seven and thirty, Chip?
Twenty-seven, twenty-ninth, or the thirtieth?
Twenty-seven.
I could do the twenty-second, twenty-third, anything like that, but or next week. Twenty-seven, twenty-ninth, thirtieth, I I do any of them.
Yeah, twenty-seven or thirty. Which one?
Twenty-seventh, y'all?
Yeah, twenty-seven.
Time y'all wanna do it?
Do it at one.
We gonna, we, we just meeting, we're gonna meet with the school for two. We could have a joint meeting if they'll meet with us at, say, one o'clock.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking.
And we can both go through it. That'll give them time, time to review it also. We need to get moving on this. Doc Leslie, you think your board, your board could meet with us next uh?
Twenty-seven.
On a, next Tuesday, on the twenty-seventh? At, at about one o'clock? All right.
We have, well, you got, you got class Monday?
I got class Monday evening.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But don't you worry about that.
Okay, one, one P M.
Two, Monday's holiday. I don't have any class. Tuesday, I got a a virtual class. Don't, don't worry about that.
I'm just thinking that we couldn't do one, maybe we could.
Yeah. Whatever works.
Okay.
I I just can't do it that that way.
Okay, we call on Tuesday.
Break that.
Go on Tuesday, one?
Tuesday, one or sometime here.
Hey, one P M. Tuesday.
All right, Tuesday at one?
Sounds good to me.
Yep, all right. Good enough. All right, what else, gentlemen? Go have anything else?
Oh, maybe.
All right. Nothing else, I will.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, one other thing. It wasn't on the agenda. Um. Just a quick update on the ADV program on the grant. Um, they have removed the vote on Bridge Creek. Um, we have received a, an invoice. Um. Is that two hundred twenty-five thousand? Two fifty-five in the amount of two hundred fifty-five thousand. Uh, the grant needs to be closed out this month. Um, and we were just to ask if uh, we could get a motion to go ahead and pay that invoice uh, by handwritten check.
All right, do you have a motion for that?
Move second.
And a motion to second, any other discussion? If not, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
All against? How you going, Mr. Tadlock?
All right, thank you very much.
All right. Anything else?
That's all.
I, any board members have anything else? All right, I entertain a motion to carry over to five twenty-seven, twenty-five at one P M.
Salute.
Second. Got a, a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, all of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all for coming.